This is the 2013 Morrisville Mayor and Town Council Candidates Forum presented by the Morrisville Chamber of Commerce.
I'm Carlotta Ungaro, I'm the President of the Morrisville Chamber of Commerce, and thank you so much for coming out tonight. We are thrilled to be able to host this forum for everyone. Before I get into thanking your sponsors and everything, I do want to give you a couple little ground rules. We are videotaping this tonight, so if you can keep the noise and the moving about to a minimum if possible, particularly those of you right here in the middle, when you get up, if you need to go to the restroom or grab something to drink, you may just want to kind of walk a little left. We had a meeting here a couple of days ago, and I said slither to the right, slither to the left, so just be aware that we do have a camera, we'll be videotaping it. So, we do ask that you keep the clapping and the cheering and all that down to a minimum, and it also helps allow our candidates more opportunity for questions if we keep our noise and clapping down to a minimum. So, that's the ground rules for tonight. We will run to nine o'clock. I am very honored to have several great sponsors tonight. We have the Indian American Forum for Political Education. Would you guys raise your hands? I don't have my glasses on, so I can't see. Thank you so much. We have the NC Impact, they're here tonight too. There they are, back there. They're sitting in the back. I want to thank Preston Development. I didn't see anyone from them here tonight, but they helped make this possible as well. And the Perimeter Studio and Conference Center, the facility we're sitting in right here, they have donated all their services to us tonight, including the videotaping, so we're very thankful for them in helping us out with this project. Every time that we do this event, we have some great logistics partners with the Zeta Phi Beta Sorority, and I've got them scattered all over the place, so some are in the backrooms helping with the cameras, so you guys raise your hands. Thanks so much for being here. So, a little bit about how the format's going to be, we'll let the candidates have two-minute introductions. Each of the candidates will have two minutes to tell you why you should vote for them, and then we will have a question and answer period. We will, some of the questions will be for all the candidates, but most of them will be by their seat they're running for, just to keep them fresh for you guys and to not have, you know, the last person having to answer after nine other people have answered. What can you say? I mean, it's only so much you can say. So, we will be doing that, and thank you, everyone. We have an overflowing bowl of questions here, so we are going through those real quick, making sure that they can be read. My penmanship's not that great, so we're just making sure that those that are a little tough to read, we're going to rewrite them out, make sure they can be read, but we will be drawing them, so your question may not get asked, just want to make sure everyone understands that. This is the only way I know to be fair to keep it random and making sure everybody has a chance. So, we are timing the responses, so the Zeta Phi Beta ladies will be ringing a bell, give them a tester there, so everybody can hear it. So, that's your sign that your time is up. At the end of the session, each candidate will have one minute to wrap up if they want to address something in a question earlier, or if they want to just tell you one more time how great they are for you to vote for them. That's their choice. And let's see. I also am very honored to have here tonight as our moderators Representative Avila and Senator Behringer, and here's their bios backwards. They're going to tag-team this, and what we'll have is our senator, the higher house. Senator Tamara Behringer will moderate the first half of the event, and Representative Marilyn Avila will moderate the last half of the event, but I'm going to go ahead and introduce both of them now, so we can make a quick transition at the middle of the session. Senator Behringer is serving her first term in the North Carolina Senate in District Seat 17, which covers a piece of Morrisville and down through Western Cary and Apex, and some other areas too, but that's the best I can see on the map. She serves as, she jumped right in, and she's actually serving as Vice Chair of the Commerce Committee. That's quite an honor for a freshman to be serving in a leadership role so quickly. Behringer is an attorney with Behringer Law Firm, and she's also a professor at UNC Chapel Hill in Business Law, Ethics, and Professionalism. She's an honor graduate of NC Chapel Hill in Business Administration as well as law, and she's a licensed foster parent, serves as the President of the Adams Elementary School PTA, and volunteers with the American Red Cross, Girl Scouts, and Save Child of North Carolina. And she and her husband have a son and two daughters, so thank you for being here with us tonight. Representative Avila was first elected to the State House in 2006 to District Seat 40, which currently encompasses Wake Forest, North Raleigh, Briar Creek, and of course, Morrisville. She's been a lifelong Republican, and she's been active with the party since 1990 where she served as the Chair of Wake County Republican Party. That was in 2003. She worked for the John Locke Foundation for 15 years before being elected to the General Assembly. She began her career as a chemist with King Finishing and then Haynes Hosiery, and then she owned Command Performance Focus One Hairstyling and Lines. If you were a chemist, I bet you did great color. She's married to Alex Avila, and they have a son and daughter, so thank you for being here tonight. Senator Behringer's going to come up and get started while I get the mics going.
Good evening, thank you for having me. I want to thank you all for being here and being willing to serve. I truly believe that the best government is the closest government to the people, and this is what, this is exactly what this is. So, thank you so much for your service and your willingness to serve the town of Morrisville. Do you have a question for me, or shall they just begin with their introductions?
Start with your introduction.
All right, so two minutes each. You may begin.
Good evening, and thank you all for being here. I'm Jackie Holcomb. I'm the current Mayor of Morrisville, and of course, as Carlotta said, we have a number of sponsors this evening that have made this possible, so thanks to them as well. And we have a couple of town staff here, and at least one elected official that sort of set the stage for us, for all the work that's been done for the years leading up to the Morrisville that we all love at this time. The last four years have been incredibly productive in the town of Morrisville, based in large part on building on the work that had been done previously. We've made some headway on transportation and road issues. Is it enough? No, it's not. But we are about to complete an NC 54 study with several partners. We have got the design of the NC 54 bypass that will be funded this year. Our school crossings are safer than they were four years ago. We have a number of transportation improvements that we're working on. Parks, greenways, we have a number of those. We will have a groundbreaking in 10 days for the RTP Park that we've been waiting on for nine years. Finances are solid. We are the smallest community in North Carolina with a AAA bond rating, and it goes on and on and on with our sense of community and sense of pride in the town of Morrisville. So, with that, it's been a productive four years. I'd like for it to be another productive four years, and with your support and your vote, I think we can get there. Thank you all very much.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for joining us this evening, and I want to thank, of course, MCOC, as well as Indian American Political Forum Education, and of course, NC Impact, and people who have helped this organizing it. Thank you all very, very much. My name is Narendra Singh. I am an academic professor of chemistry and department head in Methodist University, and I've been here, there for about 30-some years, but I live in Morrisville. I have been living in Morrisville for the last 12 years continuously. I came to Morrisville in reality in 1983, in fact, and right then and there, I fell in love with this town when only 250 people were there. So, it has been my home since. I have a vision for Morrisville that we call 2020, which is clarity, and of course, a long-term planning for Morrisville, which depends upon three initiatives: convenience, development, and also evolution. Now, married for 35 years, father of four children, actually, raised them very well. Socially liberal, fiscally very conservative, and love this town, love this state, and love this country immensely, and I will give anything to serve for this country, state, and this town. Rapid growth without infrastructure and fiscal discrepancies, as well as targeted discussion in Town Hall was the main reason I'm running for the mayor. As Abraham Lincoln has said, "That divided house cannot stand." Therefore, I am going to be your next mayor. I want your vote and support. Please come out on November 5th and vote for me. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and good evening, everybody. My name's Mark Stolman, I'm running for Morrisville Mayor. I would like to thank the organizers of tonight's event, including the Morrisville Chamber, Preston Development, Zeta Phi Beta. Did I get that right? All right, good deal. NC Impact, they've, they came on and provided the food and a lot of the support here, so we appreciate that. I also want to thank the candidates that are sitting up here tonight and their families. If it wasn't for the dedication this group has presented over the last, you know, five months to a year, you know, we can't do this. So, hats off to each one of you. I know it's incredibly difficult work doing this day in and day out. It's stressful. It's tough on the family, it's tough on the job, but I truly appreciate the 10 folks that we have up here tonight. I think we all love Morrisville quite a bit. There's no question in my mind that we do, and that's why we're here tonight. The mayor and I have several things in common, so if we can start with that. We both live in the same sub-development. We both drive Hondas, right? And we both root against whoever's playing Florida State University, right? Okay.
That's close.
Close, okay, okay. Well, we, you know, it's really a privilege to be here tonight. I think what makes, you're going to have all sorts of different choices when you get to the ballot box. Mine, I think, is a leadership style. I want to continue to be cooperative with businesses, with residents, with the developers. Find a way to get to yes. Find a way to make things happen, and that's really my goal. I made a promise many years ago to try to keep your taxes as low as possible, and I've been able to keep that as much as I possibly can. So, I appreciate it. It's truly an honor to serve the citizens of Morrisville, and thank you again for being here tonight.
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank you for coming. I'm Councilman Steve Rao, one of our outlawed representatives on the council, and I want to thank all the sponsors again for this wonderful event, for the mayor and my colleagues who I serve with on the board for being here, my good friend Pete Martin, my opponent, and all the candidates. Thank you. There's once a quote, one of my favorite quotes, "History tells us where we've been, but vision tells us where we're going to go." And we live in one of the most historic towns in Morrisville. Some of the last battles of the Civil War were fought here right in Morrisville. But as our mission statement says, we're also a crossroads for innovation. And I've spent the last two years tirelessly, since I was sworn into office, working to make that vision a reality. My vision for Morrisville is that we're a global hub of innovation, a destination for anyone around the world with a great idea to create opportunities. And in less than two years, half the term of a four-year councilman, as I replace Tom Murray on this council, I have led the efforts to work with our chamber and our Innovation Foundation to start an entrepreneurship initiative. We graduated five entrepreneurs last week, one of them already started, so we're creating jobs. We're one of the most technologically advanced towns in the city, in the state of North Carolina. I have more PhDs per capita in Morrisville than anywhere in North Carolina, and so I'm leading the efforts to bring IT minds to give us ideas on cloud computing, to join the list of cities in open data, how we leverage analytics to have a smarter city to make a difference. I promised Tom Murray that I would work tirelessly for constituent services, and I'm the only council member, well, the mayor meets a lot of people too during Town Hall, but I have council office hours every week. And during these office hours, we've had great ideas become a reality, like the English is second as a language class, youth entrepreneurship camps, meeting with the Triangle Cricket League to celebrate this great sport, supporting negotiations to push Northwest Park forward, and all of these things. And I've hosted, we voted for the RTP Park, and discussions on transportation. I've done all of these things, so I'm asking for you for a second four-year term to continue to greet us forward. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for coming this evening. My name is Pete Martin, and I'm running for the Atlas Seat. I was born in the Caribbean, I have a family of nine. My mom passed away when I was six years of age, so I never knew my mother. I grew up with my father and cousins. When I moved here, I lived in New York for about 28 years. I worked in the banking industry, and then I also got married during that time and going to school part-time, and then full-time. I have two sons, Brian, who is married to Diptya Gella, and Damian, who is doing his masters, he's an engineer. He's now in China, doing his last term. I ran for the Morrisville Town Council for 12 years. I've served on the board. I think I did extremely well. I think I deserve an additional time and service to the town of Morrisville. Why I'm running? I'm running because I believe that Morrisville should remain a residential community with balanced and sustainable growth. I believe that there are issues, for instance, the transportation, the greenways, which I can solve, and that can only be solved with someone who knows how to build consensus. I am a consensus builder. I am proud of my 12 years of service. I want to bring back honesty, integrity, and commitment to the residents of Morrisville and to this Atlas Seat. That's why I'm asking for your vote. Please vote for me on January, on November the 5th. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. Good evening. I'm TJ Colley, and I've been working for the community of Morrisville since moving here six years ago. I'm 48, happily married to my college sweetheart Kathy, she's right over there, with three wonderful kids. I received my degree from the University of Virginia Business School, and I have over 15 years' experience working in large and small business settings. 10 years ago, I retired to be a full-time stay-at-home dad while my wife continued her career. That's important, because it allows me the time and flexibility to pursue my natural inclination towards leadership and civic involvement in a full-time capacity, now that all of my three kids are in school. Here are a few of the highlights of the things I've done in the past three years. Two years as Vice Chair of the Public Safety Advisory Committee, founding member of the RAINN Committee, East Meets West Steering Committee Member and Volunteer Coordinator. I attend all Town Council meetings and speak on behalf of both residents and small businesses. I advocated for increased safety and quality of life in my neighborhood, resulting in the installation of speed tables. I worked with my neighbors and founded the first community watch in our part of town. I coach multiple youth recreational sports teams. I'm an active member of the PTA at my kid's elementary school. And that is just some of the actions I've taken. Now, here's what I'm going to do while I'm in office. Right now, the main issue concerning residents is traffic, and the root cause is our region's lack of a mass transit system. This is compromising our quality of life as a commuter, as commuter traffic clogs our roadways. I will meet and lobby with regional and state officials to address this issue and work to mitigate the traffic woes of our residents. Next, I will work to maximize the responsible utilization of our tax dollars. I will continue to work with our council members and staff to look at each of our departments and seek out further efficiencies and revenue generation opportunities. My corporate finance background gives me a solid foundation to help craft a sustainable, long-term budget. What you really need to know to assess me as your candidate is that I do more than talk. I take action. My actions clearly demonstrate a willingness to improve our quality of life right now, today. I'm not waiting for November 5th to help out our town. I've been doing it since I moved here six years ago, and will continue to do so. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. First of all, I would like to thank all the audience and the sponsors who are present here. My name is Vini Gore, and I have been doing business in Morrisville since 1995, and I have been living here since 2005. I'm married for over 25 years to lovely Lady Vibha, who is sitting here, and I have two children. Nikita, she is a medical student at ECU Greenville, and Nathan, he is a Globe Business Program Scholar at UNC. My family strongly believes in community services and philanthropic activities. I manage two small businesses named A1 Consulting Group and Go East Plaza. I'm a licensed professional civil engineer and an environmentalist for over 25 years, working as a consultant to federal, state, and local governments on projects such as highways, transportations, water resources, parks and recreation, military, and school and educations. My distinct qualifications are that I have a proven leadership with extensive related experience in common sense. I'm a successful entrepreneur and independent, unaffiliated thinker who keeps his constituents' interests first and foremost. My vision to promote Morrisville is to make it as the most friendliest place to live in, work, and do business in, in the Triangle area. I believe in Helping Hand philosophy deeply involved in a number of civic organizations, just to name a few. Chairman of Morrisville Planning and Zoning Board for two terms. North Carolina State Bar for eight years, appointed by the governor. North Carolina State Film Council, appointed by the governor. State Board of Architects for seven years, appointed by the governor. I have adopted three state highways within Morrisville for cleanup since 2001. I'm a founder-chairman of Indus Foundation, a global philanthropic organization. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I would like to thank organizers, Chamber of Commerce, and the sponsors. I'm happy to be here in front of you all to present myself. I'm Rao Bandhulpati. People call me Bhan. I've been here in Morrisville for the past 12 years. I'm married to my lovely wife, Sylou. I'm proud to see her through from an engineering graduation from India all the way to a medical school at UNC. I love public service. That is my passion. That's why I'm here. Two years back, I started American Cricket Premier League for a passion towards the game. We have 350 registered players in the league, 20 clubs, and I manage the whole league. It was a successful league. I have been volunteered in adopter highways, in cleanup programs, and many health awareness camps in and around Morrisville. Here comes my agenda. The first utmost priority is public convenience. What I mean by that? Easing the traffic congestion. And we need to have schools, public-funded charter schools for the kids in Morrisville to provide convenience to the families as well as to the kids, so that they avoid all the big trips to rally downtown. And low taxes. Public money is not free money. We have to spend wisely and effectively. Thank you all. For details, please go onto my website. Thanks for giving this opportunity.
Thank you, Rao. Good evening, everyone. It's a real pleasure to have you in the audience and to know each one of your faces. Hopefully, I will have the opportunity to know the ones of you I don't know quite so well even better before the evening is over, but thank you so much for coming. And thank you to the Morrisville Chamber of Commerce, of which I helped start years ago, and Carlotta's doing a fantastic job with the chamber. I appreciate all your effort, Carlotta, and all the sorority sisters, and all the others who have made this evening possible. I have a husband of 31 years, and we're still speaking, and I have a grown son and a grown daughter. My daughter is now 26, and my son is 30. I am very proud to be here in Morrisville. When I first married my husband in '82 and then moved here in 1984, less than 300 people lived here, and most of the families were interrelated. So, I always like to say that if I, in those days, if I offended one, I offended the whole town. So, hopefully, I don't offend anybody tonight, and you will get to know me more as time goes on. I am probably the most senior member sitting here in age, and I'm the most senior in longevity of public service to the town. Now, in my 14th year as a public servant and as an elected official serving on your council, holding the District 4 seat. Thank you so much for coming. I look forward to knowing you better. Thank you, Margaret.
Good evening. My name is Vicki Scroggins-Johnson. I have the honor of the longest name on the ballot, but you can call me Vicki. I would like to thank all of our sponsors, all the volunteers for this evening, and most important, all of you for spending the evening with us. I know we all have busy lives, but it is important to know who are going to be your leaders for the next four years on the Town Council. I take this responsibility of campaigning and listening and hearing all of you very seriously, but I take the position of the District 4 Town Council seat even more seriously. I'm from Michigan originally. I'm from a town called Elk Rapids. It has a citizenship of only 1,200, so it's very similar to Morrisville so many years ago. I worked very hard in school, and I attended the University of Michigan, earning both my bachelor's and my master's degree in Business Administration. What makes me different from the other candidates is that I have international business experience. I'm a certified project manager, and my strength is bringing together successful teams to accomplish great things. Some of my projects have exceeded $30 million, which is larger than the entire operating budget of the town of Morrisville, which is $26.5 million for the fiscal year 2014. I'm very active in the town. I am the President of the Savannah Homeowners Association, and I'm the Chair of the Morrisville Public Safety Advisory Committee. I have been working with the town for the last six years on various zoning, roads, and safety issues. Safety is 33% of our operating budget as well, so I take that very seriously. I asked for your support on November 5th, and I want to share more about me with you tonight. Thank you again for coming.
Thank you, candidates. Now, what we're going to do now is start with a question that each of you will answer, and Dr. Singh, we're going to start with you. And this is a vision question. Here goes. It's November 2017, and you have just completed your four-year term in office. What one thing would you like to have seen done in the past four years?
Transit is the main thing, which is very cumbersome in this town, and I will vigorously seek for funds from federal government and of course, from state to make sure that that takes care of in my. When I leave the town, three more things will come out. I want to bring the leadership to the doorsteps of our own people, and also, the government will become smarter and will perform very efficiently with a great smartness, so time taken by the government will be much, much less, so town can become a model town.
Any questions? I'm sorry?
Yes, to Mark.
To Mark, please.
Same question?
Yes.
Okay.
Does it need to be repeated?
I think what you said is, how would we see the world in four years?
Yes, in November of 2017, looking back, what one thing would you like to have seen done in that past four years?
I'm going to say a couple of things. I want to see the completion of the 54 bypass, which is going to be started shortly. I'd also like to see some improvements done to the Morrisville Carpenter Road area between the railroad tracks and Savannah subdivision. If we can get those two things done, we've done, we've done a lot of good things at that point.
Thank you. Now, Steve. Do we just keep going? Steve, just goes on down.
Well, I, the first thing I would like to see is, obviously, I think transportation is our number-one issue, so I would like to see, as Councilman Stolman, the completion of the McCrimmon Extension Bypass, and also leveraging, if developers agree to build it right away, taking the money that we would have deployed on the McCrimmon Extension and create a transportation fund for Morrisville where we can identify other projects. So, that would be the one thing I would like to see. In addition, the vision I have for entrepreneurship and innovation, I'd like to, last Sunday, I announced at the China Center groundbreaking that the developers there have agreed, if it's, you know, works out with staff, to have an innovation center in Morrisville in the Outlet Mall, and this would be similar to Raleigh Harbor or what they have in Durham. So, the entrepreneurs that we graduate could then go into our center in Morrisville. I mean, if we created 30 to 40 jobs a year in entrepreneurship, it could bring in about $400,000 into the general fund if they buy houses and services in our town. So, that's what I'd like to see.
At the end of four years, I would like to see the town much better than how I met it. I believe my vision for Morrisville will remain the same, is that we want to make certain that Morrisville remains a sustainable town with balanced growth. That means that I have placed Morrisville Carpenter as one of my top priorities. I want to make certain that we find a way to make certain the traffic in Morrisville not only go through Morrisville, but the residents live here in Morrisville itself. I have a strong belief that our housing stock needs to be upgraded. We need to have quality homes where people of all age, income level, can live here, stay here, and be able to move on with their kids when the time is right. Thank you.
In four years after my first term as a Town Councilman is coming to an end, I would like to make sure that we have successfully completed the 54 bypass that Mark Stolman just mentioned. Also, Morrisville Parkway is having a grade separation that is scheduled. It's going to be difficult, and it's going to be very difficult, especially for my neighborhood where I live, but I want to make sure that that goes smoothly and we get that completed, because that's going to be really good and important for safety and pass-through traffic. One of my main things is that I would really like to see that everyone in Morrisville can walk or bike to other places in Morrisville. I think it would be really neat if we could all walk to Town Council meetings or ride our bikes. I think it's really important to increase the safety and the connectability of our town. Just last week, I participated in the International Walk to School Day, and it was a great event, and we had lots of volunteers. Thank you very much for Shannon Campbell for making that happen. And it's just really great to be with all the children and helping them walk to school. It's very exciting. There's probably over 100 children and their parents, and that's how I want Morrisville to be.
Four years from completion of my term, one most important thing as a civil engineer I would like to see is a better infrastructure. The infrastructure is comprised of transportation and The infrastructure is comprised of transportation and the drainage. If you notice, whenever we have heavy rains, so many of our roads are blocked, completely shut down, and that doesn't look nice. You know, we have to improve the drainage, we have to improve the roads. And I would like to see the other thing in the town four years later, that when somebody wants to come to town hall to get their plans approved, they don't have to wait for nine months or 12 months. There should be one-stop solution for every problem, and those things should be solved in weeks and not in months. Thank you. In four years, I would like to ease the traffic congestion. Traffic is the utmost priority. Now, coming to Morrisville, the average Morrisvillian age is 33 years. Every family have small kids. These families, they don't have time to come out and complain. They have a lot to do on their plate. As a council member, I'll be proactive, not reactive. And then, make sure we have at least one public-funded charter school right in Morrisville, not in Raleigh Downtown, way away, where the kids have to get up in the morning, 5:30, very small, little-aged kids, seven-years, six-years-old kid. And spend two hours of time in the commute, which they can use playing in the parks and spend with the family. And I'll help cooperate with all my fellow council members to make the things happen. Thank you.
Well, to say that I think all of our candidates currently serving and maybe future ones, and certainly the ones up here participating, have reached a consensus that the roads are the number-one problem that we'd like to fix. I don't think we can ever successfully build our way out of the congestion totally, but we certainly can do what we've already laid grounds for in improving some of the road infrastructure. I think the difficulty will be during that transition period when the roads are being constructed, whether it be the Highway 54 bypass, the extension of McCrimmon Parkway, which will also open up more development for a greater tax base for all of our benefits. And the railroad at Morrisville, improvement at Morrisville Parkway. When all of that is going on and the improvements of the Morrisville Carpenter Road, we're going to have to have patience, because they'll all be going on simultaneously. So it's going to get worse, folks, before it gets better, but it will get better. Thank you.
I was told when I run for council and I make promises I shouldn't, but I should focus on one thing. Can I do one thing? And that one thing would be to improve the transportation environment in Morrisville. The one thing would include completing the NC-54 bypass. We have many different names for it, unfortunately. Hopefully, we'll get a good one very, very soon. The one thing would be ongoing accounting for the NC DOT road funding. We need to annually allocate money for the Campolep funding so that we can get our NC DOT roads improved. Having a program in place would be that, part of that one thing that I would want to happen. And finally, I would like to see some of our roads that are crumbling improved, and that would be part of my one thing. So thank you very much.
Okay, so you're getting ready to learn something about me, and that is I'm a rule follower. If you ask me to name one thing, what you will get back is one thing. So what is the one thing that's most needed in Morrisville? Is a sustainable funding plan for all the transportation improvements that are needed. We know what's needed. We've known since 2009, when the transportation plan was adopted. We have a hierarchy of the priority list. We know what needs to be done, we know whose responsibility is, and we know exactly what needs to be done. The only piece that's lacking in that is a funding mechanism. So, four years from now, what I want to be able to say to you is, here's the plan on how we're going to fund the needed transportation improvements that have been approved in our, in our 2009 transportation plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Now, for our next question, we're going to continue with the transportation theme, and Steve Rao, you will take this question first, and then it will proceed down the line. What is your plan for the roads in Morrisville to ease congestion from the new construction? So what is your plan to ease congestion from the new construction?
Well, I mean, I think this is, this is an issue that's been growing over time, that, you know, if you don't invest in the infrastructure adequately as you bring in new development. And I've only been on this council for two years, but for previous years, we've improved a lot of development, and there was no requirements for developers to invest in road widening. And we do currently do that in Morrisville. So if there's traffic impact analysis, the developers will force a road widening, they'll have to do a road widening. So I would continue to enforce that with, you know, payment-of-loo funds to do that. I agree with the mayor that we do not have a sustainable financial model for transportation. Nothing is going to happen without money. We can talk all day about all the plans and everything, but without money, and the legislature, no offense to you guys, isn't giving us any money right now. We need some. But we're going to have to lobby you guys, and I recently had a discussion with Secretary Teta about the new funding formula and how we might be able to get new dollars in. But I would say, bring in new development, push them to invest in our roads, and legislature, give us some money, or governor, give us more money. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
You know, one of the things I keep hearing is widening of roads. Widening roads, the traffic will come. I don't believe that widening all the roads in Morrisville, slicing up Morrisville like a slice, a piece of pizza, will resolve traffic issues. What, one of the things we have to do is give people choices, and with choices, people have an opportunity to, to turn or way in advance know where they're going. We also need to set aside funds. I've always said that, the 12 years that I serve on the board, I've always fought for setting aside funds for road improvements and for turn lanes. Sometimes, a simple turn lane will make that difference. And we also have, again, choices is the solution, not widening of roads.
All right, we're getting ready to change the question now for Morrisville Town Council, District Number Two. We're shaking things up a bit. This will be for TJ Colley. Am I saying that properly? TJ Colley?
Thank you. Yes.
Here's the question, and then all the candidates for District Two will answer. Morrisville has one of the highest per capita incomes in Wake County, and more of its citizens have college degrees than any other Wake County town. What, if anything, can you do as a council member to maintain these as prosperity measures?
Well, I touched on it a little bit earlier, that I think transit is very important. And I actually went and spoke before the Wake County Board of Commissioners in favor of the transit plan that has been put forth. It had lots of stakeholder input from many towns, many experts. Unfortunately, it was not put forth generally for political reasons, it seems, but I would really like to work harder and try to get the Wake County Board of Commissioners to work on transit for our entire county. And that will really help alleviate everything that's going on, and it's going to get us more businesses, it's going to make us competitive nationwide, and more people are going to want to come to the Triangle, because we will have a real good transit system. Good transit brings jobs, brings prosperity, brings education. It brings all the kind of people that we want to have here in the Triangle. And Morrisville has, as was mentioned earlier, the most PhDs. We have a very well-educated workforce, and we want to keep it, and transit is the way.
Thank you, TJ. Well, I have been a consultant to NC DOT for the last 21 years. I know most of the decision-makers within the department. I know transit is a very good idea, but it's a very long cry. It's going to be happening in at least many, many more years. The immediate thing we need to do to retain the intelligentsia is to provide them facilities. And the facilities are such as parks and recreation, good schools, sidewalks, as well as trails, green paths, and of course, the roadways and drainage and watering, sewer. Water sewer is provided by the town of Cary, so we are developing a collaboration with the town to improve the town of Cary, to develop the water and sewer lines. But we need to improve the sidewalks, we need to do bike trails, we need to work with the school boards, and we are going to work with the school board to develop better schools over here. And we will make sure that we can get some grants and fundings to provide these facilities. Thank you.
All right, we have another question now. These are for our District 4 Council candidates. Rao Bond, may I, may I call you that?
Sure.
Here's the question. Thank you. Since the expectation is that elected officials will be good stewards with the taxpayers' money, one indication of how this applies to you and your thinking on the subject is to have you share with us if you supported the recent $810 million Wake County school bond, and explain why or why not you did.
Very good question. I really appreciate you asking that to me.
Well, actually, it's from one of your constituents here.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I voted yes for the bond. I'm proud of that. Education is the backbone of any system, whether you take the town level, county level, state level, country level, or the world. I am here today on this dais because of education, nothing else. I strongly believe in that, and I strongly believe giving back to the community is through education. No matter what, only one exception of raising taxes should be the education. I'm proud that I voted yes for the bond. As I said earlier, we need to have at least one public-funded charter school right in Morrisville for all these kids to have a brilliant education. The same time, we need to support all the elementary schools in town. I know it comes under Wake County Board of Education, but we need to play an active role as a town to push, because all the revenue starts from right there as a good educational district or town.
Thank you. Our town council voted or adopted a resolution to support the bond that the school system was seeking in Wake County. In addition to that, I did vote early, and I did vote for the bond. To me, the authorization that the citizens give when it's requested of them to give authority for borrowing money, in this case, for schools, improvement and rehabilitation of the ones that are falling apart and in damaged conditions now, is so important, because it allows the citizens to pay for it over time instead of all at once. And all at once is tremendously expensive and is very impractical. So it's the best way for the citizens, and it's the best way to supply better schools. Thank you.
I have a 16-year-old daughter that is a junior at Panther Creek High School, and I asked her the other day, "How's school?" And she had one word: crowded. I voted yes on the bond for the Wake County public schools, and I think this bond allows my daughter and her classmates a better chance of having a lower class ratio and other opportunities for education. I also had an opportunity while campaigning to speak to Bill Fletcher and Zora Felton, who are now appointed on school board by the last election. I said to them, "I don't really like the school bond completely, because you do not include any Morrisville schools." And they said, "We understand that, but do you still support it?" And I said, "Yes, because Morrisville students will be positively impacted by that. Therefore, I support the bond." Thank you.
Thank you. We have another question, and this is for our mayoral candidates, and we're going to start with Mark Stolman. What is your stand on the Second Amendment rights in relation to the people of Morrisville?
I think that as a municipality, we need to be very, very careful with how we talk about Second Amendment rights. I do support the Second Amendment and all the rights that are provided under that constitutional amendment. We are currently out of sync with the state as far as local rules. Those changed October the 1st, and it has to do with carrying a concealed weapon in certain areas around town. I believe at the end of this month that Morrisville will vote to be in sync with the state laws on that, which is good. So I think that's really a state and federal issue. I want to focus on local issues. Personal opinions are fantastic, but to represent those on behalf of Morrisville or behalf of the town council, I don't, I don't really think that's a good idea. Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, if you will take it next?
Absolutely, and thank you very much for the question. Councilmember Stolman's right, the town of Morrisville did indeed lose our authority to regulate concealed handguns on our playgrounds and in our bars and restaurants that serve alcohol. I, I think there is nothing wrong with hunting. I think there is nothing wrong with owning a gun. However, I think public safety is a huge issue to me, especially in a community that has so many young families. I think that any rights that we have come with some responsibilities, and they come with restrictions. You can't yell "fire" in a crowded movie theater. We do have rights to free speech, but we also have responsibilities. I don't think it's a responsible decision to allow concealed guns on playgrounds. I don't think it's responsible to allow concealed guns in bars, quite frankly. Thank you.
I agree with both of you, and I, I come from the country where Gandhi and Buddha were born, and you know their philosophy has been nonviolence. I also have heard that it is not the gun which kills, it is the people who do. So management of people is the main thing. I work for a school, there are thousands of students coming in and out. So concealed weapon, I'm not in favor of that, absolutely. If the Second Amendment has been allowed by the people, I have no problem people keeping that, but management is it. It must be managed rightly by the people, so I am all for it, concealed weapon. Thank you so much.
Our next question is for our council members at large election. Pete M. Martin, you will take the first stab at it. What plans or events would you implement for teens aged 14 to 18 in our community?
The plans that, the plans in place that I would support for the teenager is education. We got to have things in town that will encourage teenagers to be more active, involved in active thing. I know in the, for sure, that in the town, we have the parks and rec situations where kids get involved with a lot of voluntary work. They also get involved in volunteering in a lot of their, their home depots and things of their nature. These are the things we need to encourage kids in getting involved in.
Thank you.
The question is, what would we like to youth, teens?
Yes, teens aged 14 to 18 in our community. What plans or events would you implement?
Well, I'm already working on some great ideas for the teen group. One is, one of our entrepreneurial companies, Chapter One, is, my son just graduated, went there camp last week, is developing apps on mobile devices for young kids. Can't think of a better way for our kids to spend time. And when his mother and I saw him come home, it was exciting. So that's one way. Have more, more science and education camps as well, youth entrepreneurship camps, and how kids start businesses. I think it's incredibly important for these kids in a globally competitive economy to train, to learn how to start businesses. I, I'm a former tennis player, junior tennis player, so I love athletics. I think these kids, personally as a father, they're on their iPads and iPhones, and in my day, we didn't have all those technologies. We just played tennis, soccer, baseball, and that goes into investing in our parks, which we are doing in Morrisville. The RTP Park, growing our parks will enable these kids to play, to stay healthy, and to have very productive lives, and then focus on their studies. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a comment. James Taylor, the rock singer, grew up in Chapel Hill, and when he was asked, "How did he come up with such wonderful songs, and how did he learn to play the guitar?", he said, "It was all those dull summers in Chapel Hill." And when you mentioned that we grew up without the iPads and the iPhones, we had to do other things, and like play tennis, or play music, or create our own businesses. And so, so there is something to, technology's a wonderful thing, but in a limited dose. Let's move on to our next question, and this will be for Vinnie Goel. Am I saying that correctly?
Yes.
Morrisville Council, District Two. Here's the question. Other than transportation infrastructure, what other areas would you improve in Morrisville?
My next priority will be public-private partnership, and you know, we, as we know, we have a very limited budgets within the town with about $26.5 million, but we have a lot of dreams to complete, and we cannot just do based on taxpayers' money. We have to invite the, the business leaders, the community leaders, and all the participants, stakeholders in the town, as well as people outside, to come forward and develop those partnerships, such as parks and recreational. Maybe we can dedicate some of these ideas with their sponsorship. Let's say if somebody says, just like SAS is doing a lot of stuff in Cary, if you can say, okay, Duke Reality, or, or somebody else, I, all the businesses, Lenovo or anybody, okay, come forward, do this.
come forward, do this project, and we will name this project after you." I think that will be one of my reasons to do, by involving the businesses and the public into those projects. Thank you.
Very good, Vinnie. That was something that I was speaking with someone else in the audience just earlier while we were just getting ready for this, and I agree wholeheartedly with that. I think it'd be great to leverage our corporations that are here in the area, because my second thing that I would do after traffic and transit would be to identify funding for implementing our Parks and Recreation Master Plan. That is a very attractive thing here in Morrisville. We have some good parks, we'd like to have more. We have RTP Park coming online. We're going to have Cedar Fork expanding with ballfields. We're going to have Northwest Park. But we need to identify funding for these items, and one thing that we can do is we can manage our finances a little bit better, a little bit more proactively, and I'm getting back to roads again, because right now, we are taking a short-term view of roads, and we can free up some money if we go ahead and proactively take care of our roads. That'll free up capital that we can use for other projects and other things that we want to do, increase the parks, more sidewalks, and just a better quality of life for all of us.
Thank you. Our next question goes for our District Four candidates. Margaret E. Broadwell, we'll begin with you. Here's the question. What is your previous experience working with the town staff? Share with us your previous experience working with the town staff.
Well, back in the good old days in 1984, when we had a part-time police officer, just one, and in the evening, the Wake County Sheriff's Department would fill in. I've come a long way, and Morrisville has come a long way with additional staff, obviously, and very capable professional staff that we're blessed to have. I have worked, I am currently working with the staff for the Winterfest Parade and Festival, Saturday, December 7th, at 11:00 a.m. on Town Hall Drive, just saying, come and have a good time. For the past two years, I did it myself from private funds and thousands of dollars out of pocket, but it put a lot of smiles on faces and brought people together. So I'm their advisor to the Parks and Recreation Department this year. So I guess that's my most current working directly with staff.
Thank you.
I serve as chair on the Public Safety Advisory Committee, so six times a year, I work with the fire, the police, and the Public Works Department. But outside of that, I actually work ongoing through volunteerism and so forth. This year, I had the opportunity to work on the Morrisville Carpenter Road Expansion Project, which took me outside of my comfort zone on the Public Works, and I advocated for this project to keep going, because we need safety improvements along Morrisville Carpenter Road. I work with our assistant, or temporary town manager, Tony Chiatakis, on a regular basis, members of the Planning Department, and even invited our town council for an information session in the Savannah neighborhood. So I've worked very closely with the staff for the last six years, as well as this year on a special project.
Coming to working with the staff, I'm closely associated with Jerry Allen, Parks and Recreation Director, because I was most of the time in the field, coaching kids and coaching camps. For the past decade, we were struggling to have a good field, full-fledged field, in the town of Morrisville. When we started five years back with only five kids, now we have a camp of 150 kids in three times in a year. So Jerry Allen has helped us a lot. At the same time, he has taken our sincerity and passion towards the game to the council, and then we are all happy that we have an RTP park, and the major field in RTP park is a cricket field. This is going to be beneficial for everyone in Morrisville. We are going to make it a multi-useable field, whereas we have games in the morning, and we have an amphitheater at one end used for cultural purposes in the evening or the nighttime.
Thank you. These are wonderful questions, and these are posed to you by your constituents. So we'll continue on the next, or for our mayoral candidates. Jackie Holcomb, Madam Mayor, we'll start with you. What are your plans to help the small businesses in Morrisville?
Good question. What I'd like to do is talk again about a discussion we had a couple of years ago to create a small business ombudsman position that is a part-time position that assists small business owners who are just coming into the town, starting a business. They would also assist small businesses that are existing with issues that they may have. Unfortunately, we talked about this two years ago, it was not a funding priority for the town council at that time, but I think having a dedicated individual that would assist small businesses would go a long way to ensure that they're successful. It's a great question.
Thank you.
I agree with you, but let me tell you this. I will work with Federal SBA as well as NC State SBA to make sure that a small town like Morrisville do flourish and bring the businesses from outside. But as Mayor said, let me give you some statistics, about between 2000 and 2004, the growth of commercial value was about 14.64%. And in the second last regime, she fought against and won, the growth of the commercial value was about 74.43%. And Mayor, I will disappoint you by saying this, that in your regime, it has gone down to 5.24%. Yeah, that's how bad it has gone in the last four years. So you have not shown yet your motive towards the small businesses, so I don't know how you're going to do that. But I will, with Federal SBA as well as NC State SBA, bring them down here, work with all businessespeople, and I have answered my question also. I will try to have a restaurant hub as an educational institution in here.
I think you all know that I'm a huge advocate of small businesses, and I think it all starts with having a town that has a good, you know, a good solid infrastructure, and we've all talked about the roads and how we're going to try to improve that. We have to make the planning process a lot more predictable for small businesses, and I think we're going to address that with the Unified Development Ordinance that we're currently reviewing. We ought to do a little bit more, though. We need to reach out to the small business owners and let them know that they are welcome in Morrisville. The Chamber does a fantastic job with their Coffee and Connections, the last Thursday of every month, 7:30 to 8:30. There's about 40 to 50 small business owners there that get to mentor each other, introduce each other, and I think that's how you grow small businesses. The main thing is, let's make Morrisville attractive through the lowest tax rate that we possibly can while providing the services that people are expecting, and I think that will draw the small businesses into Morrisville. Thank you.
All right. This will be my last question of the evening, and I will be turning the podium over to Representative Marilyn Avila after this question. So this is for our councilman-at-large position. Steve Rau, you'll take it first, and this is the question. And thank you, by the way, I've enjoyed being here. Serving on town council is a big-time commitment. What are your current professional commitments, and how much time will you be able to commit to this position?
Well, I hope my boss watches the audio, but I have the pleasure of having one of the best bosses in the world, Steve Chase, Vice President of Global Sales and Marketing, and if it weren't for him and my family, I couldn't do this job. I run business development for Alpha and America, we're a growing technology company. When I joined there two years ago, we were 220 people, now we're about 550 people with a significant global expansion. So I have flexibility. So when I have a council meeting, people at work know that I won't be there, I leave early in the afternoon, I may come in late, and then some days, I have to work on Fridays, Saturdays. So it's just really balancing it, and I work in Raleigh, and it's really nice to work in the capital city, where I can get away from Morrisville for a while, get a different perspective, and then come back home to Morrisville. And I'm also an avid runner, and I'm going to start running in Raleigh, because with all these work problems, everyone always sees me running on the roads, and they go, "When are we going to fix this road?", but it's really just balancing family with your work commitments. But I thank my family and my boss, and like I said, I hope he's listening.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Absolutely. The question is, serving on town council is a big-time commitment. What are your current professional commitments, and how much time will you be able to commit to this position?
I served 12 years on the board prior to this term. I was on the League of Cities, I was on the League of Municipalities, NCLM, where I was the vice chair. I take half or more of my vacation just to do town business, because I thought it was, I think, and I know it's important, that a councilman don't just show up at board meetings. You have to be involved regionally. If you really want to get things done, you have to be on regional boards. That's what I do. I go on regional boards. My opponents have never served on any regional boards, and I make certain I am on those boards, so I can first-hand, get first-hand information, and fight for the interests of Morrisville. That's what I've done for 12 years, and I'm proud of it.
Thank you, and good luck, candidates.
Thank you all for the invitation tonight, especially for Carlotta to think about me. I enjoy being here with all of you tonight, and I must say that for you people who have stepped forward to serve your community, I commend you, and I know the hard work ahead of you, and just get ready, you're not going to make everybody happy. In interest of full disclosure, I need to correct one small error in my bio. I feel like it's necessary. I began my political career at the age of 18, when I registered to vote in southeast Georgia in 1960s, and I had to do it as a Democrat, so I cannot claim to be a lifelong Republican. We'll begin the questioning now. We'll start with Morrisville Town Council District Two with Mr. Colley, and the question is, do you support having IDs to vote, and if so, why or why not?
I believe that the system is currently not broken, and we should not change it.
Can you repeat the question, please? I didn't hear it.
Do you support showing an ID to vote, and why or why not?
Well, you know, this is my personal opinion. I'm an independent thinker, and I don't think it's a bad idea, because when you go to a grocery store, you want to buy a pack of cigarettes, or you want to buy a bottle of liquor, they ask for your ID. And I don't feel offended, I feel actually good when they ask me, I feel younger. And I think if you start asking for an ID to vote, I would not consider that to be an absolutely bad idea. Thank you.
Okay, this is a question now for District Four, and we will start with Ms. Scoggins-Johnson, and it's a little long, so bear with me. Town council has agreed to cut a landowner a break on road improvements in a deal that will bring us Sheets to the intersection of McCrimmon Parkway and Chapel Hill Road. It has given a developer two years to pay for $226,725 in road improvements. Usually, it's the developers and landowners to pay for road improvements upfront or build the roads and sidewalks. One, will it give the same kind of deals for other developers, or businesses, or individuals? And two, if they default, should the taxpayers bear the burden?
Very nice question. I think we need to take this situation on a case-by-case basis. The particular location of the Sheets gas station does not have a roadway that is totally connected through. That's actually where the McCrimmon extension and the bypass project will be. Therefore, allowing that developer a two-year window in order to make those improvements does not negatively impact the current road transportation, transit issues. So it is acceptable. Should the town ask the taxpayers to bear the burden if they default? No, they should make sure that they have a payment in lieu amount appropriate in case there is a default.
Thank you. I was obviously sitting on the council when this issue came before council, and I believe, if my memory serves correctly, it was on a split vote. But I did vote for this flexibility that I thought was necessary to gain an amenity in the community that far out exceeded us not having the amenity, especially since the developer was going to be paying for part of the infrastructure and the road, a short amount of road extension that would be necessary going for the McCrimmon Parkway extension. And if we did not do that, and by the way, the developer has paid early, very early in full, if we did not do that, then the cost of construction would be borne by the taxpayers, and I didn't think that was an acceptable alternative.
Okay. First of all, as Vicky said, any development, especially commercial development within Morrisville, when a particular provision has given to one business, everybody thinks, it raises a bell, saying that, "Oh, it has been given to that business." Can we also avail that opportunity? Rules are being made to follow. I understand there will be amendments to them over a period of time. Probably a poll with all Morrisville citizens should have been taken in an effective way. We don't have that kind of system right now. Probably an authoritative polling system from every Morrisville resident to accept the situations like this will lead to a better judgment rather than six people making a call, seven people making a call in the council.
The next question will be directed to the candidates for mayor, and we'll start with Dr. Singh. You've been knocking on doors and out there meeting people in Morrisville. What is the number-one concern you hear, and whether it's the town's job or some other level of government, how do you think you, as a council member, can address it?
Yeah, I've been knocking the doors, and one problem, only one problem overwhelmingly have come from all of the citizens of Morrisville: transit, rapid growth, poor management as far as congestion is concerned. That is the main thing. Now, how it can be managed? Correction is not that easy. We should have been proactive in doing so, but we didn't become proactive. Now, Providence has a huge problem, and I have heard that the other gate is going to close as well, and they are panicking how to go by doing this, and Real Road takes charge of this. So a problem like this, in Wexford, there's a BMP pond, and in Phillips Place, there's a parking place. So congestion is the biggest problem in Morrisville. Correcting this will take a lot of effort, so we have to go out and seek funds, federal, state as well, to make sure that we correct this. It is not going to be an easy job, but if there is a problem, there is a solution, and it can be done, and we will.
Thank you very much. It's really been a pleasure knocking on doors for almost the last 11 months, and at last count, I think I've hit about 1,400 homes, seen about 1,300 pit bulls, and occasionally, people answer the door and talk. And you're absolutely right, Dr. Singh, the number-one question people ask is, "What are you going to do about the roads? What are you going to do about transportation?". And it's not an easy conversation, because there's a lot of moving parts to it. It's a complex issue, but I think if you have the time and you can talk to folks about how the state is finally looking at 54, we're doing a study there. There's a TOD overlay near the future rail station at McCrimmon, and how that's going to affect traffic. What's happening up at Church Street near the Walmart, and that even though it's a Durham issue, it affects Morrisville greatly. So we talk about that. It's explaining all these different moving parts, and what we're doing now with the 54 bypass is a very positive thing, but it's something people want to talk about, and I've been very honored to have that conversation many, many times.
So no surprises here. The big challenge in Morrisville is transportation. It's the biggest concern people have. So the issue then becomes, is it our problem, or do we pass it off and blame the state or the federal government? And the answer is, no. We can take partial responsibility, and we can pull in the partners based on the relationships that have been established with Campo, with the other MPO in Durham and Chapel Hill and Carboro. We can continue the partnership that we have with the North Carolina Railroad in trying to come up with a model project in the town of Morrisville that will benefit both the railroad and the town of Morrisville. It's going to take some local funds to fix this. We're going to have to have some skin in the game, quite frankly, but we have. We've started to proactively budget so that we can get grant funding to augment what the town can spend. So the biggest issue is transportation. The solution is, yes, we're going to need to be a part of it, whether it's a state road or a local road, by partnering with those folks that we've developed relationships with.
Thank you. Now, candidates, this is a question that you all get to answer. We're going to start with Mr. Martin, and here is your question. The lack of civility and inability to work across different The lack of civility and inability to work across differences is permeating American politics at every level. Do you believe that standing your ground on issues or compromising will bring about better government? Explain your belief.
I strongly believe that compromise is what works. Fighting and division does not work. All that happens is that one group sits, takes its ground, the other one takes its ground and nothing gets done. I am a strong believer on consensus building. That's what I've done, that's what I will do. I've done it for 12 years on the board and I will do it again. Thank you.
I'm with Mr. Martin on this one. I think that compromise is very important. We all have our very strongly held beliefs and we can maintain those and still compromise. I don't think that there has to be black and white issues on this. I think it's very easy to go ahead and reach out and as long as you listen, trying to understand, not just listening to respond, it's really important because when you understand their viewpoint, you can understand what it is that you can do to sort of meet and find common ground. Because once you find out what you both want, if you have a similar goal, you'll be able to go ahead and go towards it. And it doesn't matter where the good idea comes from, that is the solution. It's a good solution, so you go ahead and embrace it and you work for it and you build consensus among the other six council members and you make it work.
There are two most important words in my dictionary for working on the other side of the aisle. One is teamwork, just like in supports we do. We don't like the opponent, but we still work with them. The second is negotiations. So if we can convince the other side how to negotiate and how to do it, not for the other side, that's why I'm unaffiliated, because I think for me, the most important part is working for my voters, working for my constituents. I don't care what Democrat or Republican say, I care what the Americans say. So I'm going to convince both sides of the aisle saying, this is not for you or me, this is for the voters who put me here, who put you here. So I think if we develop that attitude, we can settle a lot of issues. Thank you.
Yeah, I strongly believe in teamwork. Personal egos will be there. Every person is born with an ego at different levels. But when we are in public service, when we are working for public, we should keep them aside. No matter on which side you are, always think for the public, best interests of the public and make a good decision for them. Even you are on the opposing side, still you should raise your voice and say, this is something wrong. Maybe we are not doing correct. That is what a characteristic of a person, the first most characteristic of a person for public service should be. I would do that. Thank you.
Thank you. The word compromise has been used and so I'll use the same one, but I think compromise is good, but it means different things to different people. And saying you're compromised is not the same thing as actually compromising. I think in a council meeting, for an example, when a council member hurls insults during, to another individual during the council meeting, that doesn't create warm fuzzy feelings. And I think the essence of compromise begins with personal relationships. So while we recognize in ourselves, we can only control ourselves and no one else, we have to be respectful and welcome all ideas and learn to disagree without being disagreeable.
Could I ask you to repeat the question, please?
The lack of civility and inability to work across differences is permeating American politics at every level. Do you believe that standing your ground on issues or compromising will bring about better government? Explain your belief.
I'm a project manager and I strongly believe in teams, but I also believe that we have to hold our values fast. So the most important things we need to do on a council is listen. Listen without judgment, listen to the ideas, whomever they come from, and then begin the dialogue to find where we need to compromise and where we need to come together in order to find a winning solution. I believe that is the way to resolve any conflict and differences. Thank you.
And so I don't think I have anything of value to add. I think everything's been said, which is another hallmark of an efficient town council meeting, after it's all been said, there's no reason to say it again. Clearly, compromising and having discussion that are productive are the ways to go. I will also say, if it was that easy, we wouldn't be seeing what we're seeing now at all levels of government. It is much more difficult in practice than it is in theory, but it takes some work. And that's one of the opportunities that the town has to get better at it and to work with the North Carolina School of Government in order to help build those relationships. That's a good question, though.
Yeah, very good question. And you can see and you have witnessed in last week or so, the country has been a victim of non-compromise in Washington DC. So you can see how difficult it is. You are right, Madam Mayor, it is very difficult. I come from a largest democracy, largest democracy on the earth and I, here again, I am in the country which is also largest and best democracy on the earth. There was a Pennsylvania congressman some 25 years ago, he said when he was leaving the Congress, that democracy is the worst form of the government, yet it is the best form of the government. So yeah, a lot of things you just cannot do just like that, but at the end, if you compromise, it comes out very, very right. So I'm very happy that I left one country which was the largest democracy, I've adopted one which is the best democracy in the world.
Thank you. I used to be very, very proud of being raised and born and raised in Washington DC, but lately, it's, I don't say it as much as I used to. So here on the local level, it's really interesting. We have seven, seven members of the town council. We have two Republicans, three Democrats and two unaffiliated, right? I got that right? And you need four people to agree on anything to get anything done. Hopefully you get all seven to agree. So it's interesting that you really have to throw politics out the window when you're talking about the Morrisville Town Council. You do have to come together and if it wasn't for that, we'd have total gridlock on Town Hall Drive and I don't think anyone would lump that. So we, you know, we reach across the aisle all the time, we get together. It's, luckily, most of the issues are about things that we can resolve quickly and we hopefully, and will continue to leave politics behind in Morrisville and just get things done. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't think I, the last one on this issue, but President Lincoln, I studied a lot of history and, you know, Lincoln reminded us hundreds of years ago that a house divided cannot stand and I never in my lifetime ever thought that our country would be so divided. And at the end of the day, the losing end of the bargain is the citizens that just don't get what we need to get done. I mean, we've got a government shutdown right now, we've got people furloughed, we've got businesses in Morrisville, biotech company I met in my office hours last week might go out of business because they're losing all their federal funding. At the local level, I think it can be, you know, I want to give my council credit, the mayor, Councilman Stolman, Councilmember Broadwell, Steve Deal, all of you that are here, we can get to yes. We did get to yes recently. We selected Martha Wheelock as our new town manager and I think that might very well be the best vote I ever took these last two years. Thank you for coming, Martha. It was a historic decision, but it was a wonderful addition to our team and a decision that we came together on. We can do it. I know we can. I know every person on the board, we can get to yes.
Thank you all, we appreciate that. Now we're going to go back to the districts and we will go to District Two with Mr. Gold starting the answers to this question. With so many companies headquartered in Morrisville, how can we leverage this reach to enhance and develop our town without personal interests?
The simple answer is partnership. As I said before, public-private partnership is the biggest tool to give incentive to these larger companies whose headquarters are located here, just to give a few, two examples, like Lenovo and Duke Reality are two of the largest corporate headquarters in Morrisville. If we can reach out to those or many other companies like that and ask them, you help us and we help them, they are always looking for something in trade. I mean, we should not be always on the receiving end, we should be giving back something. I sit on Morrisville Chamber as a member and a lot of time I get this question over there from the developers as well as business committee. Why town is always asking us to give something? Why can't they give us something? An example is like sustainability. Okay, you develop a lead program, but give them some incentives. So if we can scratch each other's back, I think we can definitely get a lot of things out of these corporate people. Thank you.
Could you repeat the question, Representative Avila, please?
With so many companies headquartered in Morrisville, how can we leverage this reach to enhance and develop our town without personal interest?
I think we just communicate with them and partner up with them and figure out what it is that they want to do, what they want to accomplish, how they want to have their employees be happier. I think that if we got some leagues going, some inter-company leagues, I used to do that with my last company, Pharma Research, and it's just a way to build community and increase the quality of life and that would sort of help with the Parks and Rec departments as well. So I think that that's a good thing and just having the companies in town is great and we'll keep on doing that.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify the question here. This one is going to be directed to the District Four seats and we will start with Mr. Bond, I believe we've agreed on is the name. What would you do differently or the, during your previous term or the incumbent if you are a challenger?
Can you please clarify the question?
Well, it says, what would you do differently than your previous term or the incumbent if you are a challenger?
I'm not an incumbent.
This is, this is not making any sense. If you're, if you're the incumbent, what would you do differently? If you're a challenger, what would you do differently than the person sitting in office on an issue?
Oh, basically is, you explain why you're running because you don't like what the other guy's doing. That's what it amounts to. And if you're, and if you're in there, what are you gonna do to keep your job?
On one item, on one thing.
I think I could, let me clarify that now that I've understood what they're talking about. If you're the incumbent, if there's one thing, what would you do differently? And if you're running for this seat, what would you do differently than something that the incumbent has done in office?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for clarifying the question. Basically, it all boils down to, you know, understand the question first. Yeah, I remember my son, you know, before even I completed the question, he starts answering the thing. And then I said, no, wait, 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 patience. So, so one thing which I would like to do as an incumbent, I said, the whole system is standing, the backbone of it is an education system. I know we don't have the control on it, but the only control we can get is through public-funded charter schools in Morrisville and supporting the existing elementary and middle schools in Morrisville. We don't have a high school yet in Morrisville. We need to get one. Right now, the Panther Creek High School is overcrowded because all our kids go there. That's a big problem. And the schools, the class trends are packed. Teacher-to-student ratio is very high. So we need to dedicate more money and better teachers, better schools. At least one public-funded charter school I would have got in the last four years if I was in office. If I'm running for an office, what I would like to see, yes, definitely the same thing what I would have done four years back. At the same time, I want to see the public convenience is utmost priority. I'm done, sorry.
Thank you. Well, since I'm perfect, I don't know that I would change anything. I say that tongue-in-cheek, of course. I've always viewed issues with seeking all the data possible and information about an issue before I vote one way or the other, seeking public input, seeking direction from staff and gathering all the information. And then I've always looked at it, I think, with common sense and what is going to be the best for the citizenry. So I think my method of reaching a decision probably will not change, but hopefully you have become familiar with me enough that you agree, I've done a good job for you. That was my whole mission from 1984, so I hope you're satisfied with what I've been doing for you as a public servant. Thank you.
What I would do is engage our residents more in our issues. I would ask for more input. I want to hear from people other than just the few that come to the council meetings. We do have public hearings on many, many issues and we don't have enough of you stepping forward and vocalizing what your thoughts and ideas are. I want to create a more open-door policy. I want people to feel comfortable with email or in-person or coming to the council and speaking their viewpoint because it's only then that we can make the best decisions on the issues that affect all of our town. That's the one thing I would change, is encouraging more active participation and an open door. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good response. So we got a little rocky start on that question, but very good responses. Again, we're gonna start with the mayoral candidates and we'll start with Mr. Stolman first. The question is, what should town council look for in advisory board appointments?
As far as, we get the privilege and honor to vote on these advisory boards and what we're looking for is someone with the commitment to the town, first of all, someone with hopefully relevant experience and passion, because it's a volunteer position, it takes an awful lot of hours and we want someone that can sit there and go to these meetings month after month and contribute. We get an awful lot of very qualified folks and we're very lucky that we do get very qualified folks. The decisions are usually easy, the resumes are stellar, but it's that commitment that we need. It's a very grueling hour sometimes. I'm looking at, and most of the folks up here have been on a committee at one time or another, and, you know, we do appreciate everything these citizen committees do for us.
Ditto. Honestly, I don't have anything to add. Mark nailed it. Great answer.
And I'm serving on one, so, and these, Jan Faulkner was there, by the way, when I was elected, but Mark was there too. So thank you for putting me in Board of Adjustments. So you saw something good in me anyway and I'm, I am wise chair and have chaired many sessions before. When I become mayor, which I will be, I will, I will look for three, four things in there. Subject matter expertise. So, you know, we have to see that if the person has interest in that arena. Track record, how a person has behaved in past and what they bring to the town. And of course, we talked about compromise, teamwork, collaboration and commitment. Commitment is the one thing, I attend meeting and many times people don't show up for the meeting. That commit, I know it's a free service, but if you have taken this responsibility, you must come and see that. So these four items, I will look into my next members if they want to serve in board.
Thank you very much. Trying to clarify a question here. This is going to the Councilman at Large Race and we'll start with Mr. Rao. And the question is, you were asked to privatize, prioritize, excuse me, a list of infrastructure projects. Far and away, the top two were McCrimmon Parkway Extension and RTP Park. Please choose one of these projects and tell us why it's important and what the completion will mean for Morrisville. And the note here is, that I've been directed, is we've heard a lot about the McCrimmon Parkway Extension, let's discuss the RTP Park.
Okay, thank you for, it's a great question. Well, I think that some of these projects have already happened. So first of all, you know, we voted for RTP Park and council is excited about the groundbreaking of this park on October 24th. I personally support RTP Park. I think it's great to grow cricket, which is a global sport. I'm also a tennis player, so I'm glad we're getting three new courts in Morrisville. And I think we need more parks as we grow, particularly for the residents of Morrisville towards Providence and Creek. This park is gonna give them closer access to a park than where we have them now, Morrisville or Cedar Fork or Indian Creek. or Cedar Fork or Indian Creek. So I would rate that, you know, McCrimmon was obviously my top choice, but I almost wanted to rate them both one. So I think it's going to be a great thing for Morrisville. I think when you look at the growth of the cricket leagues, it's going to bring in a lot of revenue and dollars to the town, so I'm glad we're supporting it and look forward to moving forward.
Talking about cricket, I grew up in the Caribbean, so I know what cricket is all about. I've played cricket all my life, and I know what the income and the tourism will do to cricket. Even though we're not the best cricket area in America, Florida, I think, is number one, then you have Atlanta, then it will be Morrisville. This is one of the only places in this area where cricket will be played. So I know what it's like. I know about cricket. I grew up with cricket, and I've been a supporter of the cricket guys for 12 years or more. I moved to Morrisville 17 years ago, and I've always been involved way before half the people who are playing now. Probably all the guys who are playing now, they are new to me as far as the cricket is concerned, so I know what it's all about.
All right. Well, thank you very much. This is a question, again, we're going to all of you people, and we're going to start with Mr. Colley. And the question is, what is the one thing you like most about Morrisville? Just one, and why?
It's our mayor, Jackie Holcomb. I was having an issue with our traffic calming. I was on the steering group of Preston Green Neighborhood with a couple other neighbors, and we were just trying to make sure we got a win-win situation, because we had some funding from the Park West Development, so we had that money to work with, and we wanted to make sure we got the best possible outcome for our neighborhood. And Mayor Holcomb answered the phone, met with me, and that is why I'm here today, because of her welcoming stance, and she made me know that I can make a difference in Morrisville.
Well, Morrisville is considered to be the heart of Triangle, and the one thing which Morrisville is blessed with is the location. I think we are proud of Morrisville's location, right next to the airport, close to 540, 40, 54, you name it, everything is right here. And that's why the town has grown from a few hundred people to over 20,000 people in such a short time. Nobody can beat this location, whether it's Cary or Raleigh or Durham, but I think that I'm proud of Morrisville's location.
Yeah, same question. Next person. One thing that you like about Morrisville and why?
Yeah, sure. Yeah. I should have got that cricket question, you know? But Morrisville grew from 250 people in 1980s, or even way back to Jeremiah Morris' time to right now 23,000 to 24,000 people. It's all because of the location, as Mr. Vinny Doyle said. The location is perfect and apt. The RTP has developed, and this has become the heart of RTP. And people working in RTP chose this place to be the closest one to commute. That is the greatest asset for Morrisville. Right now, most of the companies in RTP are software or technology-related companies. Now, the culture of working from home is growing. If that grows, it need not be Morrisville. It can be any other place. They can go and work from Apex, Cary, or, you know, suburbs. We need to have Morrisville rightly developed to retain all these people who are right now high taxpayers of Morrisville. We need to have a good infrastructure for Morrisville to retain them.
By and large, the best ingredient for success here in Morrisville is its people. You are why we're up here, and you are seated up here with us. Our diversity, our talents, our knowledge base, our workforce is all related to people. And if it weren't for you, we wouldn't be here.
The welcoming nature of Morrisville 10 years ago is why I am here today before you. We have a very open, welcoming community, and it has been a wonderful experience. Yes, geographically, it's great, but I stay and my family stay because we are a community. I enjoy working with all of you on various volunteer committees and so forth, and it just keeps getting better. I love the history of the people, and I love making future plans with all of you people. So it's definitely our people, I agree with Margaret, but it's all of us working together with our open mind and our open nature, and that's what makes Morrisville special.
Mayor?
So the women all agree on this one. Absolutely, the very best thing about Morrisville would be the people that are here, from our staff, the incredible volunteers that we have that make things happen in Morrisville, the diversity of culture that's in Morrisville, the different faith communities in Morrisville, the different ideas that come to Town Hall from people all over Morrisville, absolutely make this the very best place, I think, in the Triangle. That strong sense of community is one that we've built up over time. 2013 is actually the year of community in Morrisville, and the only thing that makes our a strong community are the people that are here, that take part in it. And certainly, there are 10 folks up here that are helping to make Morrisville a strong, diverse, and very successful community. So it's got to be the people.
Yeah, thank you. I think this is a very good question for me, in fact. And questions should be rephrased. It should be what you don't like in Morrisville, where we like everything in Morrisville. And for that, I drive 55 miles one way to go to work and come back to Morrisville. That's how good it is. 25 students per congressional district are taken from East Congressional District to go in North Carolina School of Science and Math. And from Morrisville, my two daughters went to School of Science and Math, and they refused to go anywhere else. Let me tell you that. And I do drive back to come back here. I got vice presidency in Texas for a university, and my kids and my wife did not let me go from Morrisville. And I gave up, gave up that if I did go, I could have become president today of any university. I gave up that for Morrisville. And I come back to Morrisville and gear up in the morning to see the fresh sun in Morrisville.
Dr. Singh, we're lucky to have you here. Thank you. As most people have said, it's the citizens. Where else in the world can you go, knock on a door, and say, I'm Mark Stolman, I'm from the Morrisville Town Council? They believe me, and invite me into their kitchen, and we chat for a half hour. That just doesn't happen, you know, in other parts of the country. So absolutely, it's the people, it's the diversity in our community, it's an incredibly welcoming place to be. Let's not tell the rest of the world about this place. You know, we are really blessed with our location, our low tax rate, the town municipal services that we provide. I'm just so lucky. We all have choices where to live, and we're awfully glad that we're here. Thanks.
Well, personally, my favorite thing about Morrisville is the restaurants. I'm eating out way too much these days. But seriously, I think the greatest thing we have going for us is the global talent that we have in Morrisville, particularly in the information technology industry. Recently, 2012 report from Best Performing Cities ranked Cary and Raleigh as the number three city in the United States of America for the best place to live. And part of it was economic. And Raleigh-Cary area created 6,000 jobs. And in this article, you know, they mentioned the Wake Tech campus in RTP. And guess where that's going to be? Morrisville. So we're part of a movement that's very exciting right now with the global talent, not only for the culture, but the tremendous economic opportunity it's going to give us to recruit software companies. There's such an IT shortage of workers. If I was a software company and I were Governor McCrory, I would bring them to Morrisville so we can create jobs, we can join the list of cities with open data, with analytics to solve problems. And in my second term, I want to launch an IT task force so we can leverage these minds, bring them into Town Hall.
You know, I am so happy to hear everybody saying so many good things about Morrisville. You know, who should be given some of the credit? Myself. I served 12 years on the Board itself, and if I had 12 bad years, you would have heard bad things about Morrisville itself. I moved here because I wanted Morrisville to be, to remain a residential community with balance and sustainable growth. That's why I'm running. This is one of the best places to live. I could have gone to Atlanta. When I got the job here with Duke, I could have gone to Charlotte. I stayed here in Morrisville because I wanted Morrisville to be my home. That's why I love Morrisville.
Okay. I think we finished, we started with you, and we just ended with you. And this is reaching the end of our evening, and I'd like to thank all of you for staying. I know it shows your interest and your concern for your neighborhood, and it means a lot to these people. What we're going to do now is start at the far end with Ms. Scoggins-Johnson for one-minute closing remarks, and we will end with the mayor. So we'll be going in reverse order than we've done in the past.
Again, Vicki Scoggins-Johnson, remember Vicki, that's all you need to know. District Four. I bring forward a very solid background in project management. The ideas that are, and projects that are brought forward, I will finish. I'm a finisher. I don't just talk about it. We have had many years of talking about projects and having them die on the vine. As a project manager, there's reasons and risk and consequences for that, not to mention increasing of costs to the town. If we delay a project, the asphalt price goes up in the roads projects, the park price goes up, cement goes up. We don't necessarily always have to make an indecision. We have to complete the decisions that we make. And that's the difference I bring, is a solid foundation of let's get it done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I will appeal, first of all, to each of you who are registered and capable voters here in Morrisville, although we are happy to have all of you from wherever you've come tonight, to please register your vote for your choice of the candidates for each of the four seats. When you go to the polls or vote early, you will choose four individuals to fill the four seats that are up for election or reelection. In Morrisville, we only do it one time. We have to get it right then, or you have to get it right then. A candidate can win or lose by one vote, so your vote truly does count, and it's very important that you register your choice. I will say on my behalf, as a District Four incumbent, that it has been my privilege and honor to serve you all through the years. And if I were you, I would consider not only what I've done as an individual for your behalf, but what I have done in addition to just sitting up there on the council and making decisions that come before the council. I have taken initiatives and created other programs and services for you and for your benefit, and I ask you for your vote. Thank you.
Generic agenda is good to have so that we don't go wrong anywhere. Like, we cover all the issues in our agenda to make everyone happy. But when it comes to me, I would like to say, I have a couple of things which I would like to do in the next four years. Betterment of education system in Morrisville. Whatever it takes and how much effort it takes to get there, we want to see our kids top and top in the nation. And we would like to have better parks for these kids to come out and play rather than playing on electronic gadgets. And public money is not free money. We need to effectively, efficiently manage it. We are responsible for it. These are the three things which I would like to bring on the table. Thank you.
I have a long list of dreams to serve my fellow constituents, but I'll try to accomplish all that in 59 seconds if I can. I will review the Town Hall process to be more user-friendly and efficient, work with my fellow citizens to evolve best-valued solutions for their problems. As an engineer, I would like to reduce the wasteful spendings and improve the infrastructure, promote public-private partnership and community service culture, become ambassador of small businesses to make them thrive hassle-free, encourage youth to get involved in town administration, and improve incentives to promote sustainability and green technology in day-to-day life. I come from a background where everything is recyclable, so I would like to promote that culture over here, too. I'm a fiscally responsible and know how to balance a budget. I have the qualifications, experience, and energy to become the next councilman and serve my constituents. Thank you.
Obviously, both Vinny and I like to be prepared with our written statements, so going to work for mine as well. But really, what you really need to know to choose me as your representative is that I do more than talk. I take action. My actions clearly demonstrate a willingness to improve our quality of life right now. I'm not waiting for November 5th to help our town. I have been doing it since I moved here six years ago. I have the time to devote to this. I am available to make this my full-time job. I have experience in both corporate and civic settings. I'll bring the efficiency of the private sector to the public domain. I can get along and build consensus. I'm able to help craft win-win solutions to challenging problems. I am known as a reasonable and practical guy. I can engage in healthy debate without alienating any of those who disagree. To conclude, I am ready, willing, and able, and very passionate about taking on this role. You have a clear choice about who you'd like to add to this Town Council. I hope that you choose TJ, your neighbor, who has demonstrated a desire and ability to improve our Morrisville community for everyone, each and every day. Thank you for coming out. Please vote for TJ November 5th.
Thank everyone for coming. There is a clear difference between the two members on the Council at Large seat, whether you're going to vote for a person who does public service or someone who wants to be a politician. There's a big difference between both. Past performance is indicative of future behaviors. On November 5th, you will have a choice to pick one of us. I hope you'll vote for Pete Martin. I bring to this board honesty, integrity, commitment, and hard work. That's what I'm all known about. Look at my webpage, follow my history of my working years here in Morrisville, you'll see. I raised two kids who are successful. That's the type of quality of work that I bring here to Morrisville. I ask for your support. I hope you'll vote for Pete Martin on November 5th. Thank you.
First of all, I want to thank my wife, Dr. Como Parekh, who is my real boss, and I wouldn't be able to do this without her, and my parents, my heroes, my mother and father, and Colonel Parekh, you're here somewhere with my in-laws. Thank you for giving me the chance to run. You know, I have really been honored to serve on this board, and I truly believe that every day as I perform my duties, I think of what am I doing to build a better future, a future that I may never see with some of the things that I've done. Yeah, Pete Martin, you were on the board for 12 years, and you're a good friend of mine, and you did a great job, a good job. But I'm doing better, because I've led on more initiatives. It's not about the votes you take, it's about how you lead. Like, when I went to the English as second language class today for lunch, and I saw people from all around the world, that happened because of teamwork, working with my staff, or the youth entrepreneurship programs that Cole Johnston from Panther Creek High School is starting. The list goes on and on. I've done more in two years than many council members have done. I'd be honored to serve you for four more years on this board. Please vote for me on November 5th. God bless each of you. Thank you.
Thank you. I do want to thank the sponsors of tonight's event for putting this on. You guys have been fantastic. This is quite impressive, and we walked in here tonight to see what we had, and I know it wasn't a small amount of work, so thank you guys very, very much. Want to thank everyone in the audience for participating. We get about a 10% to 15% turnout Election Day, and it looks as though we're going to do a little bit better this year. So with your support, let's show a really strong turnout November 5th. I think most of you know me. I'm a CPA, I'm a business guy, I'm a controller of two companies in RTP. I'm going to make sure that the money is spent wisely. I'm going to get the job done. I appreciate this opportunity. This is quite an honor to be part of the Town Council right now, and I would love to be the leader of Morrisville, and I appreciate the chance to do that. Thank you so much.
I also want to thank you all for coming here and supporting us in every way possible. As you have heard all of us this evening, and you come to know, you have come to know who stands for what. And I think now you know who is your better choice for mayor, and that is me, Dr. Narendra Singh. I stand for strong leadership. I have a consensus-building experience from the school where I worked for 30-some years, smart government, model town. I will bring the leadership to your doorstep, so you do not have to just write an email and make a and make a phone call. I have a plan to come to your neighborhood with councilmen to make sure that you are heard by your council. Once again, I ask you, leave all your biases aside, make a right choice, valuable choice for Morrisville, please, on November 5th, and give a chance to Dr. Narendra Singh to be your mayor, and I promise you, I will not let you down.
Well, thank you all very much. I'm not going to say you save the best till last, but I will just thank you all for everything that we've accomplished together in the last four years. We have made an incredible amount of progress in these last four years, and I am not going to take the credit for it. It's happened because we have a wonderful staff, we have a terrific Town Council, and we have an army of volunteers that make things happen in the town of Morrisville. The progress that we've made has to do with the people who call Morrisville home and the people who open businesses here. Now, with that being said, there are challenges in Morrisville that we've not yet met. We're making progress, but we're not there yet. Those of you who know me know my favorite thing to say when talking about Morrisville is, it's good to be Morrisville, and I believe that. I'd like for us to work together for four more years and make it great, but whoever you vote for, as Councilmember Broadwell suggested, do vote on November 5th. Thank you all so much for being here this evening. We appreciate it.[1613.12][1613.12](Applause)
I want to add my thanks, too, to all of you that came and stuck it out till the very end. I admire that. And I'd like to offer my congratulations to all of you, the winners, whoever they may be, on November 5th. But you're also a winner in my mind, because you do have such a love for your community that you're taking on a pretty rough task. Running for office is not the easiest thing in the world. You're never going to make everybody happy, you're going to have a lot of criticism, and you've got to be a pretty strong person to be able to take that. And to think that you love your community enough to put yourself out there for that means an awful lot. And you, as the voters in Morrisville, you have a job, too. First of all, you've got to study each one of these people and find out who you can support wholeheartedly when they take on the job as your leaders to this city. But you have another responsibility, too, and that is to keep their feet to the fire and be able to communicate with them and let them know when they're doing things right, not always when they're doing things wrong, which unfortunately, for most of us in elected office, is usually about all we hear. But I admire them taking the step forward, and you have a responsibility to support them and continue to make Morrisville a wonderful town to live in. Thank you all again, and I'll turn it back over to your president.[1706.75][1706.75](Applause)
Great. Thank you so much for being here. And we did get most of the questions. There were a few that we didn't get to. I know this gentleman right here had a question about some things going on with Church Street. It doesn't really fall in Morrisville, so I'd like to reach out to you to get in touch with me, and I'll get you in touch with some people in the town or any of these. And this is also a plug to go to our website. If you want to go to a one-stop shop to find all of their contact information, websites, we did do a questionnaire with 13 questions that they all answered. Some of those were posed tonight. We solicited those from the public through the Town Newsletter a few months back, so those are there as well. So please go there to do some homework. Be sure to check out all their websites. That's where you get the most information, but this has it all in one spot, so you don't have to go hunt around everywhere. Thank you so much for coming tonight. We appreciate your time, and best of luck to all of you.[1763.12][1763.12](Applause)
This has been the 2013 Morrisville Mayoral and Town Council Candidates Forum, presented by the Morrisville Chamber of Commerce.